The following is a production of Cary TV, the Town of Cary's government access channel.
To order the November 13th meeting of the Cary Town Council, and I would ask you to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
To move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries unanimously. Our first quasi judicial public hearing is a request to develop Green Level High School. An overview of the hearing procedures and detailed rules are attached to the printed agenda. All speakers who want to speak during this public hearing must be administered an oath by Mrs. Johnson, who is on my right. We'll pause just a moment to allow those individuals who would like to speak at the public hearing to approach Mrs. Johnson and receive their oaths. And I am going to pause from saying anything until the oaths have been completed.
And they're booking it, some are booking it, you know, in advance, because that's kind of the way it's gotten to.
Wow, knowing they can move their place if they have to. Wow. I just, man, I don't know when they can use one.
I know.
Well, I tell you what, I love the new way they did the desk where we've got a separate meeting for quasi judicial work, it's a whole nother part of my brain. And you get in the groove about a third one.
So, I'll see.
And when we used to make some talk, I don't know. I don't know if you really thought this joint, I never realized that. Do I?
It's a different decision.
It's a totally different, you gotta change your brain.
At this time, I'll ask council members if they've had any site visits, ex parte communications, financial relationships, specialized knowledge, or close relationship to an affected person to disclose, starting on my left, Mr. Yerhaughn.
I have not, ma'am.
Mr. Bush?
No, sir.
I have not. Mr. Smith?
I have not.
Ms. Robinson?
No, sir.
Okay, very well. Based on the disclosures we've heard from council members, I may invite anyone to the podium at this time who's been sworn in to speak if you have an objection to council members, a council member's participation in this hearing. Seeing no one, I'll continue. I'll open the quasi judicial public hearing, and Mr. Hales of our staff will introduce the hearing.
Thank you and good evening, council. The first hearing on tonight's agenda, as you mentioned, is Green Level High School. It is a request by Wake County Public School System for development of a new high school on approximately 88 acres located at the intersection of Roberts Road and Green Level Church Road. Site is located in Cary's southwest area plan. To the north of the site is Towne of Cary owned property for the White Oak Greenway. To the northeast is Towne of Cary owned property for a future park, which the full development plan hasn't been done for. There's also a residential 40 rural residential piece located immediately to the east between this site and the manors at Green Level Crossing. And then to the west and the south are typical rural residential and agricultural uses. Site is not located adjacent to any current or planned transit facilities, however, there is a future route planned slightly north of the site at the intersection of Green Level West Road and Green Level Church Road. Park's Recreation and Cultural Resources Facility's master plan does not identify any improvements on this site in particular, however, as I mentioned before, the White Oak Creek Greenway corridor does run immediately to the north of the site, and there's a future park site to the northeast. There is a future Towne of Cary trailhead, area reserved for a future Towne of Cary trailhead on the school site itself adjacent to Green Level Church Road. And as part of this development plan, they will be extending a 10-foot street side trail from the northern entrance, we'll talk about later when we get to the site plan, up to tie into the existing 10-foot street side trail where the bridge crosses White Oak Creek. Site is impacted slightly by stream buffers and floodways. There are three tributaries of White Oak Creek that run north-south across the site, and there are some flood areas, floodplains along the northern portion of the site and a conservation easement. Most of the stream buffers themselves are also contained in existing conservation easements on the site. Park is own residential 40. Schools are a permitted use by right on residential parcels larger than 20 acres, which this would qualify for. Site is wooded. Majority of it is mixed pine hardwood. There are some existing clearings where some agricultural activity has taken place in the past. There are several scattered residential and agricultural buildings on a couple of noles located closer to Roberts Road, less so toward the northern end of the property. This is just a site looking in, you can barely see an old tobacco barn located here in the corner. And then the site's fairly heavily wooded with pretty clear understory. So, the proposed site plan includes a new high school building shown here in the bright teal. That building is just shy of 321,000 square feet. Entrances are proposed off of Green Level Church Road, the northernmost off Green Level Church Road is for bus, serving the bus parking. There are two entrances proposed to site off of Roberts Road. The westernmost of those is to serve staff and visitor parking, a small portion of it, which is between the building and the intersection, and the larger bulk of it, which is immediately to the east of the building. And then the second, more easterly access off of Roberts Road accesses, future access for the park and accesses the student parking. There are four stormwater best management practices, and they're all constructed wetlands located on the northern half of the site, and they're shown on this drawing in the darker blue. The perimeter buffers are being provided as required by the LDO. Only perimeter buffer that's required outside of the streetscapes is a 40-foot type A buffer adjacent to this residential 40 tract, and they are providing that as required. Streetscapes along both Roberts Road and Green Level Church Road are 30-foot, and they're being provided as well. Architecturally speaking, predominantly the building is a red brick, and ancillary materials are a metal horizontal siding, a small amount of decorative CMU at the base along the towers, and then metal accents. As part of this site plan, the applicant has requested several minor modifications, the first being the location of parking between the building and the adjacent rightsway for the major intersection. Minor modification two deals with connectivity to adjacent parcels, in particular the connectivity to the future park site that Towne of Cary owns. The several 3A through 3G are removal and replacement of champion trees on the site that are impacted by site development. And then our minor modification number four is a modification to the architectural requirements, in particular the materials requirement on the northern and the eastern facades of the building. We'll go into more detail on each of these. So, the LDO restricts parking being located between a building and adjacent rightsway for individual sites located at the intersections of either thoroughfare or thoroughfares and collectors. The intent of that is to bring the buildings closer to the intersections to frame it and eliminate the aesthetic impact of parking located adjacent to the rightofway. What the applicant is proposing is to provide 108 parking spaces, roughly 13% of the total on the site between this building and the rightofway. Second one deals with connectivity to the park property. The idea of providing connectivity is obviously providing access, in this case, to a landlocked parcel, as well as providing drivers' options and pedestrians' options to get to where they're going. In this case, the future park property has not got a master plan done yet, so there is some ambiguity or uncertainty into the ultimate alignment of that connection. So, the applicant is proposing for that last 194 feet from their stub to the property line to provide access easements and construction easements, and to maintain a gravel driveway as is currently existing, to provide access to that property until such time as the town plans it and extends that in the future. Request for champion trees, they did a tree survey as part of the site plan as required by the LDO. That tree survey identified 14 trees in excess of 32 inches. Of those 14 trees, they are preserving seven and proposing to remove and replace seven. Finally, the materials requirement modification, the LDO requires, the architectural standards require 75% of each facade of the building be made up of at least 75% high-quality masonry material. Standards do allow exemptions for civic and institutional uses or allow council to approve a reduction of up to 25%. On the east and north, actually on the north, they're providing 56%, on the east facade, they're proposing to provide 57%. That concludes staff's presentation at this time. We will be following up after the staff and other speakers speak, after the applicant and other speakers speak, and providing staff's opinion or professional direction at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, we'll call on the applicant's attorney to present arguments and evidence in support of the application by addressing the applicable approval criteria.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Kenneth Haywood. I am pleased to be before you and the members of the Town Council tonight on behalf of the Wake County Board of Education. We are here tonight to ask the applicant to ask for your consideration and approval of the site plan which has been before you, that Mr. Hales has started to present in terms of the staff report that follows the application that our agent CLH Design presented some time ago. Very briefly, and then I'm going to then introduce the various speakers that I do have with me tonight. As you've heard from Mr. Hales, who did a very good overview of the site, it's an 88 or 87 acre site. This site was acquired by the Board of Education back in 2008, so they've had the site for some time. They needed the funding from the recent bond in order to be able to do construction. Now, the bond's successfully passed, we've got the monies to be able to start the construction for this high school in your town. We are excited about this now having funding, because I believe the last high school in Cary was Panther Creek in 2008, so it's been a few years. So, we're excited to be back before you to be able to put a high school in your community to serve the students and the citizens in various different capacities. We do have a couple of things that I'll mention to you tonight. The school name is, been named as Green Level High School, so that's what we'll be referring to today. The site, because of various conservation and other easements, there is about 25% of the site that's going to remain undisturbed. And so, while we have an 87 acre site, a good portion of the site will be undisturbed and will remain in its natural state. You've seen from the various slides that have been presented, this particular site is unique in terms of when it was originally acquired, because we do have a situation where to our immediate east is the town park site, to the north and to the northeast, you see that Cary has remaining land that it owns, and so we're really surrounded in this particular corridor with our neighbor, the town, in terms of trying not to disturb any existing single-family residences. We have a site where predominantly we're in conjunction with the town in terms of your ownership of what the properties you already have. There is a single-family residential subdivision to the east of the site, which we'll be talking about, between our site, and that is about a six acre parcel that you'll see that's undeveloped at this point in time, but we do have a 40-foot buffer, and in talking with our engineers, my understanding is that a large majority of the mature trees that are already on the site between us and the adjoining property enter will remain. We will supplement that to the extent that we need to in order to comply with the opaque buffer, but we are pleased when you look at the aerial of this and you see the amount of vegetation on the site that we'll be able to maintain, a good portion of that. With me tonight are many different people that I'd like to introduce, and they're all here tonight basically to be able to assist you, to the extent that there are any questions that you have, or questions that come up during the public hearing that are raised by others in the audience, that you want further information from, we brought them here so that they can be a resource to you. So, let me very briefly tell you who we have here and their capacity, and then through tonight's presentation, to the extent that you need to hear from them, I will certainly call them up and make them available. We have Betty Parker, who's here tonight, Senior Director of Real Estate Services, who was involved in the acquisition of the site back in 2008, and can certainly speak to the, any questions regarding the site acquisition. Larry Sherrill, Facility Planner, Wake County School System is here tonight and can talk to you in that capacity. We have Zach Pierce, who will be the first presenter after me, who is principal with CLH Design. He's a landscape architect, and his firm is the one that made the original application to the town staff. We have Steve Holley, who's an architect with Fanning Holley. Ken Loring, who is a civil engineer with CLH Design. And finally, we have Jeff Hakendell, who is a transportation engineer with SEPE Engineering, who completed the transportation improvement analysis, shared that with staff and with DOT in terms of making sure that we were in compliance with what those agencies required of us. So, at this point in time, because I know you have a long agenda, I'm going to stop talking. I'm going to introduce Mr. Zach Pierce to ask him if he could come down and give you an overview from the applicant's standpoint in terms of what we're presenting, what we're asking for, and then I will be available to shuffle people in and out as the mayor and the town members may see fit to have additional testimony. I will recommend and say publicly that the report that Kevin Hales and his staff did, I believe was an excellent staff report, is very thorough in terms of the information they put together for you that is part of the record, along with the various exhibits that they mentioned in terms of the application from the applicant and the other material in terms, including the executive summary for the traffic engineer as well. All those items are part of the record, per the staff report. I requested they be part of the record in terms of moving them, but I did want to mention the staff report, it's an excellent report. I don't want to unnecessarily duplicate what's already in there in terms of the record and what you've heard, so that we can move things along. But if Mr. Pierce could come down, that would be great. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Zach Pierce, landscape architect with CLH Design. Very excited to be here, it's been a long time coming, and we are seeking site plan approval for the Green Level High School. This is a much-needed high school in this part of the county. We're seeing extensive and rapid growth in this part, a lot of rooftops going up, so we're excited to have an opportunity to propose a high school. During the design process, we have heard some concerns from the neighbors, and we are very sympathetic of a high school going in to some of the folks who are adjacent to the site. Some of their concerns were traffic on the roads and some of the stadium proximity, having a high school stadium close to their house. Some of the traffic improvements, we provided more onsite stacking that is required by NC DOT. We've also implemented all of the recommended off-site roadway improvements that were made by NC DOT in the Town of Cary. The stadium proximity to the homes, the stadium is sized to hold soccer and football, and really in this, in this county and state, even across the United States, really a lot of communities around high schools do take ownership, and they have a lot of pride and behind these high schools, so they really is a community-based program element on a site. And out of the 20 high schools in Wake County Schools, 14 of them have adjacent residential development that was built during or after the high schools. So, high schools coming in is not a deterrent for residential development. So, footballs, there's usually seven to eight home games in a year, which usually end around 10:30 at night. Out of those 14 to 20 high schools, and the fields were an average of 600 feet from the middle of the stadium to the residential areas. To put in perspective, the stadium here to the, to the manors at Green Level Crossing is 900 feet. Cary High School is about 370 feet, so trying to put that into perspective to, to why we're situating the field. Also, having the athletics combined up on the street helps protect the view from the public road by buffering the large visual impact of the parking spaces. So, we feel that does accomplish a couple of tasks. The, also with, to address the residential growth, I mean, the Town of Apex jurisdiction is west of Green Level Church Road and south of Roberts Road. There are four approved residential subdivisions in that adjacent area with 882 dwelling units. It's common, residential is common. So, also with that, for, we worked very closely with NC DOT MSTA, which is the Municipal School Transportation Assistant Group. They're responsible for ensuring safe vehicular and pedestrian movement on site. And here, we are providing three drive entrances, like Kevin said, the bus drive off of Green Level Church, the parent drive off of, the parent drive off of Roberts, and the student entrance. Very important to split these three types of drivers for safety reasons. The NC DOT recommends approximately 1,300 linear feet of stacking for parents, we're providing 2,300. We really don't want any parents backing up into the road. There is a long drive coming in for the student lot to here again, getting people off of the road, and the school buses as well. We do have, are excited to connect to the beautiful White Oak Greenway to the north, what like Kevin said, with the multi-use path. It's very exciting to have another option to get to the school. And also, it was mentioned, approximately 25 acres of the site is protected within conservation easement and stream buffers to the north. We also did explore a, as part to layout, a three-story classroom building layout, see how it fits in the site. In order to move towards more of an efficient layout and protect some of those areas, we went with a four-story classroom wing, really helped us be a little more compact with our design. So, this concludes my presentation. Again, I do like to say again that the staff report was very comprehensive, and I appreciate the efforts on that, so be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Pierce, if you could, just back a woman, you could give your name and your business address for the record, please?
Sure. Zach Pierce, CLH Design, 400 Regency Forest Drive, Suite 120, Cary, North Carolina.
And Mr. Pierce, in connection with your working with the Town of Cary staff on this project, is that your understanding that other than the minor modifications, which I'm going to speak to in a moment, that the site plan which has been submitted to the Town of Cary meets the existing Towne of Cary ordinances and is in compliance with Towne of Cary ordinances, other than the minor modifications that we're asking for tonight?
Yes, sir.
And with regards to the minor modifications, staff has overviewed them, but in terms of just very quickly with regarding those, one has to deal with the road that he was talking with between, that is not a full connector road to the town park. Could you just very quickly emphasize the thought process behind not actually making that a full asphalt road to the 20 property enter?
Absolutely. There was an existing pond here that was breached, there's also an existing beautiful pond here on the park property that has environmental buffers that we do need to be sensitive to, and also a private landowner to the east. So, the development of the park is also, the park property does expand all the way here, and at the time, not knowing the program and layout of that park, we wanted to allow flexibility in the future for however that alignment of that drive needs to occur. The stream and wetlands extend all the way to the property line all along here, so there will be a crossing, however, we did not want, we wanted to allow flexibility in the future. And to protect the adjacent landowner.
So, that is one of the minor modifications that you're requesting on behalf of the Wake County School System and Board of Education tonight?
Yes, sir.
And the second modification has to deal with parking between building adjacent rightaways. If you could just explain to the Town Council in terms of what you have done in terms of location and parking to comply with the LDO, and then in terms of this minor modification, where that is, and the reasoning behind that, please?
Sure. The main entrance, like I said, is interior to the site. It allows for that long linear stacking of parents, and to avoid large masses of parking lots, we do split up the parking over here to abide by the LDO. We were exploring options to break up the parking to have it less impact on the site, so we did provide staff parking over here. There are entrances into the door, which would be close to other staff facilities inside the building. This also provides emergency access and fire lane to that part of the building, which is very important. It's a very large building, so we wanted to provide enough emergency access around the building.
The third is regarding what are referred to as champion trees under the LDO in terms of requirement to be able to preserve those. I believe that there were 14 that were originally identified, is that correctly?
Yes.
And out of the 14, I believe that there was a certain number of those that were, did the school system employ an arborist?
Yes.
And so, the arborists went out to the site, and did the arborists then identify trees that were healthy versus those that were decaying?
Correct. They, the arborists provided the size of the trees, the type of the trees, whether it's oaks, maples, hardwoods, or pines, and gave the size, and also gave a status of the health of the trees, if it's...
So, out of the 14, how many of those were determined to be unhealthy or decaying?
Seven of the 14, so we were protecting seven of the other remaining champion trees.
All right, and as to, there was a slide...
Excuse me, I missed, but we were removing seven of the other champion trees. The other seven of the, of the 14 were deemed that they can be removed from the report, from the requirement.
And in terms of, have you, when you looked at those champion trees and you looked at the facilities, including a football field on here, were you sensitive to trying to make your site plan so that you would disturb the fewer amount of champion trees as possible?
Absolutely. We're being very compact on this site. We are trying to minimize our impact, knowing with all the stream buffers and conservation easements, we are being very compact and efficient with our site. We also are protecting some existing large trees east of the student entry drive, and we also are protecting existing trees to the north.
Finally, regarding the percentage of masonry in the building facades, there is a requirement in the LDO that the Town Council has with regarding the amount of masonry and its connection between the building and the rightofways. In terms of your particular request, in terms of it being less than the 75% we heard before, if you could just...
if you could just sort of make sure the town council is aware of what portion of the building is that you're asking for the modification on, so they can understand that in connection with the street right-of-ways?
And for that, I would like to bring up the architect, Steve Hawley. Thank you. Who is the architect of record for the building.
Mr. Hawley, if you could just identify your name and who you're employed with and any particular professional designations you may have.
I'm Steve Hawley, Fanning Howey Architects. I'm a licensed architect and a lead accredited professional. And I have an office in Mooresville, excuse me, 2500 Gateway Center Boulevard.
So, Mr. Pierce, now we're discussing with regarding the facade of the building in terms of masonry and then modification we're asking for in terms of it being less than 75%. If you could orient the town council in terms of where the modification is on the building that you're requesting in connection with any street right-of-ways?
That I can do. Predominantly, we have a single-story building, which is over on this side. This is the side up closest to Roberts Road and Green Level Church Road. As the site drops down towards White Oak Creek, the building drops one floor, and that's where the four-story element comes in. That's this piece, this piece right here. The reasoning for the lack of masonry on the back, this is the side that faces the creek here, those are lightweight metal panels. When we went from three stories to four stories, we were faced with an increased structural cost to carry the weight of the brick. So, we went to a lighter-weight panel, which also allowed us to increase the size of the windows into the classrooms for daylighting. It also allowed us to decrease the overall site footprint, so we were able to conserve more of the open space. So, it was primarily the elevation that faces to the north. The other two elevations that face the public roads are within the requirements of the LDO.
Thank you very much. Pierce, anything else you want to add?
No. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
So, like I said, that concludes the formal presentation of what we have. In terms of that, we do believe that there is a volume of material within the reports in terms of justifications for the various modifications that we're asking for. But given the fact that the site plan does comply in substance with the LDO, we're requesting approval for that. I believe that Mr. Hales is going to sort of walk through the formal portion of how you have to approve the various portions of this. Regarding the minor modifications, we do believe that there's sufficient justification for each of the modifications that we're asking for on the various issues that we just covered with Mr. Pierce. And we therefore request your consideration, your approval for each of those modifications for the reasons that are given and that ultimately that you approved the site plan that is before you, so that we can move forward towards construction and housing students. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And at this time, I would invite other speakers who have been sworn in and wish to speak in support of this application to approach the podium one at a time. Anyone else to speak in support? Seeing no one, I'll continue and invite cross-examinations of any witnesses who have testified in support. Seeing no one, I'll continue and open it up to those who are opposed to this request and ask you to approach the podium one at a time. Seeing no one, I'll call on the staff for any additional, I'm sorry?
He's walking out. Never mind.
I'll call on staff for any additional testimony they wish to add. Mr. Hales?
Thank you again. I'll now go into a little more detail and some of the staff's observations on the requested minor modifications. The first being the parking located between the building and the intersection. As I mentioned before, the applicants indicated that they're requesting 108 parking spaces be located between the building and the adjacent right-of-way for Roberts Road and Green Level Church. That count includes all of the parking from this entrance all the way up until you get to the entrance drive and all the parking ends. Just want to point out that 22 of those parking spaces are located in between the building and Roberts Road. And the LDO actually has an allowance for parking to be located between the building and the road when the finished floor elevation of the building is located 10 feet or more below the road elevation. And that was to take into account situations like Stone Creek Village, where the parking lot is significantly below the existing road grade, and so the aesthetic impacts are already mitigated. So, in this case, those 22 parking spaces located adjacent to the Roberts Road right-of-way, the finished floor elevation of the building is located 10-plus feet below the adjacent road elevations, and therefore, those 22 spaces aren't really a requested modification. So, the actual modification is only to keep the 86 parking spaces located to the east of the building between there and Green Level Church Road, which represents approximately 10% of the total parking on the site. And the reason that's still a requested minor modification is the fact that that building actually sits above the road in that location. And so, the way the ordinance is written, it's 10 feet below, not 10 feet above. So, there's nine feet of rise between the adjacent right-of-way and the building where that arrow is drawn. A little bit more about the parking and some thoughts about why that parking may be appropriate, where it's located. The applicant's team did talk a little bit about the dispersal of parking and breaking up the different users of the parking, as well as breaking up just the mass of the parking, so you're not surrounded by a very large field of parking in front of the building or behind the building. If you think about Green Hope High School, there's very large parking lots all to one side, and it's just a very massive amount of asphalt in one place. Something else to consider is this is located in the Southwest Area Plan. One of the intents of that plan was to maintain some of the rural character and nature of the southwestern portion of Cary. By allowing that parking to stay between the building and adjacent right-of-way, it forces the building slightly farther away from the intersection. Given the surrounding development, which is typically one- or two-story residential development, a three-to-four-story institutional use could look very out of place, especially if it's brought very close to the right-of-way. And so, therefore, that parking being there allows them to meet their parking demand and pushes that building a little bit farther away from the roads to reduce that visual scale from the adjacent vehicular users. Applicant's team also mentioned briefly, it allows an additional area for emergency service staging in the event of an emergency. It gives them options of where they want to stage and respond to whatever that emergency may be, whether it be on the east side, west side, or north side of the building. It just gives them more options. Moving now into the connectivity to the adjacent park property, as mentioned before, there is no master plan that's been approved for that park, so there's a little bit of uncertainty about the programming and how that's all going to work in the ultimate condition. As the applicant's team mentioned, there are some environmental considerations. The inner blue line on this drawing is about the water's edge, so there's a roughly 100-foot buffer and includes some of those wetlands, a little bit of a stream corridor there at the head of that pond. That stream buffer does impact where that connection is ultimately going to be made. Depending on what happens with the pond, if it gets drained, that buffer may shrink. If it doesn't, they may need to shift that road slightly to the southeast, which could impact this adjacent property. Given the fact there's a lot of uncertainty, like I said, it made sense maybe to consider an easement for future construction once the town gets a little more, a little farther down the road with that planning for the park. In addition, there were some security concerns, both from the town and the school system in regards to having 200-plus feet of dead-end asphalt providing access to a pretty much inaccessible, otherwise, portion of property right next to a high school. We were all high school students at one time, so you know what kind of trouble they can get in. Moving into the trees, as the applicant mentioned, there were 14 trees that were identified. All 14 of those were healthy. I already took the ones, the arborists deemed in poor or dead, out of that number. So, there are 14 healthy champion trees on site, of which they're proposing to remove seven. The first five of those are fairly clear-cut cases. Tree number 10, which is the first, is located in the building footprint itself. We already talked about the grade difference between Roberts Road and the building. So, that grade is approximately 15 feet below existing grade now. Obviously, that would make it very difficult to preserve that tree and still be able to get the building footprint to work the way the school system needs to. And then, trees 12 through 15 are located adjacent to either the Roberts Road widening. There's a right-turn lane required per the traffic study to get into that drive. 14 to 15 are impacted by that right-turn lane, and then 12 and 13 are impacted by the actual installation of the drive itself. And again, having to break grade going down from Roberts Road down 15 feet to get into the site, there's a lot of grading on their shoulders, and that's why those are being The other two champion trees proposed for removal. Tree 17 is located in the middle of the proposed stadium track. Obviously, large multipurpose stadiums like this require a large amount of flat surface. And so, again, the grade here is being lowered approximately eight feet below the existing grade, making that tree really unfeasible to be saved. And again, trying to get the road into the site and provide access to the future park site, as well as student parking. Tree 32 is located a little bit further off the shoulder, but again, there's a lot of grade they're having to make up in putting that entrance in. And the applicant did mention, and I'll point out, there is a large grove of fairly large champion trees here, and I can go back to the earlier picture. You can see the yellow trees, which are the champion trees being saved in this area. It's just that one tree that was so close to the road, it was impacting approximately 50% of the critical root zone. And so, in the long run, that's probably a less likely candidate for survival on the And I won't reiterate too much, but again, the architect spoke about how using non-masonry materials on the upper stories allow them to employ larger openings and get more daylighting into the classrooms. So, that's their proposal in regards to reduction of masonry on the northern facade, which is the one that faces the White Oak Creek corridor. It's predominantly classrooms, and as you can see, the areas with the metal panels are using much larger windows in those classrooms than the areas in the center, which are the brick structure. And similarly, the eastern facade, this one faces the parking lot, visitor and staff parking, and then student parking beyond it. A little less classroom daylighting involved here. There are larger curtain wall systems in regards to the front entrances and some of the connections between the classroom ring, classroom wing, and the other portion of the building. So, this is just a summary of all the minor modifications that are being requested. Now, we just went over them, so I'm not going to reiterate them again. I will refer you to the worksheets in the staff report, which include the various individual approval criteria for each minor modification, because each one does have a little different approval criteria, and those are outlined fairly well in the staff report. So, that concludes staff's presentation. At this point, I'll turn over to council for deliberation. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd invite cross-examination of Mr. Hales, if you'd so like. Seeing no, I'll ask if anyone sworn in has any objections to the competency of the evidence or testimony? Nope? Does either party believe new evidence has been presented that warrants a continuance of this hearing? Nope? All right. Now's the time for the deliberative phase of the hearing, and I'll open it up to council members for comments or questions.
You go first, I'll go second?
Okay. I have a question with regards to the Conservation District and how it might impact the site. You mentioned there's many trees that are being saved, a lot of land is being undisturbed. Also, conservation sites say to me swales and knot gutter and those types of things. I don't know if that's relevant for this discussion, but just the idea of conservation site, I'm wondering what's different about this particular site?
Just a clarification, are you talking about the conservation easements, which were mentioned several times?
A little bit of both.
Okay. The conservation easements are located predominantly at the northern end of the site, adjacent to the White Oak Creek corridor. There's a lot of flood plain there. There's a lot of stream buffer corridors, and all that was, there are two conservation easements, one of which is the towns, one of which is the state North Carolinas, that encompass that 25 acres or whatever they were saying. There are some encroachments, as you saw in the staff report, in regards to making required sewer connections, this long arm of the sewer, this is sewer outfall, that's required to cross that conservation easement to get to sewer on the other side of the creek, as well as the road widening along Green Level Church Road. And with a stormwater impact here, there is a little bit of encroachment in both the town and the state's conservation easement there. In regards to it being in the Southwest Area Plan, it would normally be in the Conservation Residential Overlay District. Because it's institutional, that's, there's no additional bonus open space or anything else they have to give up for density. They are proposing curb and gutter on all the streets, all sidewalks, so it will be a traditional street section with pedestrian accommodations and everything else.
Go ahead.
Great. Thank you.
That was actually one of my questions. So, I'm glad to hear that, because we've had a lot of feedback from residents that they like the curb and gutter and the sidewalk. So, that's really good. You know, after Green Hope High School was built and after Panther Creek was built, we've been receiving a lot of feedback about the safety of the roads near there. And it sounds like there's been a lot of attention for stacking, trying to make sure that this roadway will address the increased driving that parents are doing of their students. I'm wondering if anything has been done regarding safety at these intersections, in particular, Roberts Road with Green Level Church, and then also the entrances into the school itself.
All right. I'll start by letting the applicant's team, they have a traffic engineer and they can speak to that, and then we'll follow up if there's any additional information.
Okay.
I'm going to introduce Ken Loring, who will identify himself. He is, as I mentioned earlier, the traffic engineer with SEPI Engineering, who performed the traffic impact analysis.
Good morning.
And shared it with staff and with NC DOT, and so he can address any specific questions in terms of intersections and let you know exactly what the improvements are that they have agreed with DOT to do. So, Mr. Loring, if you could just briefly share with us.
My name is Jeff Hoconal.
I'm sorry, Jeff.
That's perfectly fine. I work for SEPI Engineering. I'm SEPI Engineering's Traffic Engineering Department Manager. Address is 1025 Wade Avenue, Raleigh, North Carolina, 27605. I am a professional engineer in North Carolina, South Carolina, Virginia, and Georgia. We did the traffic impact study for this project. It was reviewed and approved by both the town of Cary, as well as NC DOT. It was also looked at by town of Apex, as well as congestion management section within the NC DOT and MSTA section within the NC DOT. In regards to your question about safety concerns along Roberts Road and, I'm assuming, also on Green Level Church Road and the site driveways, yes, we did, we are providing left-turn storage on Roberts Road, as well as a right-turn deceleration lane going into, a right deceleration bay going into both the site driveways. And on Green Level Church Road, we are, it's a bus driveway, we are not, we're not showing any driveways on that. It's a few number, it's a lower number of buses as opposed to the volume of vehicles that are going to the first two side driveways. At the intersection of Green Level Church and Roberts Road, we are proposing to signalize that intersection. We are also proposing for, to add a northbound right-turn lane, a southbound left-turn lane, and a westbound right-turn lane at that intersection. We actually looked at a roundabout. We did an analysis of a roundabout at that intersection. The traffic volumes were too great in the roundabout during AM peak hour, and that would cause that roundabout to operate over capacity. And a roundabout over capacity tends to queue in all different directions, pretty extreme. When it fails, it fails kind of bad. So, we added, we recommended intersection signalization there, as well as several other intersection improvements. If you'd like for me to go into, I'd be happy to.
Okay. What about going into the student driveway off of Roberts Road? That left-hand movement is so hard for kids, and it looks like, based on that angle there, I mean, is it, now I have to go back to the previous map, is it a right angle in that road, or is it actually kind of like a little hair?
Yeah. I think, I think that was a schematic drawing.
Yeah, I get it.
It's a little bit, yeah, I think it's a little bit.
It's easy in a 90-degree angle.
It's easier than that, okay. Is there, I mean, do you foresee that there'll be complications in the future, safety complications in the future with the, you know, high volume of students making that left-hand turn in there?
Actually, because of the onsite storage and stacking, I do not. I believe that they provided a large enough or a long enough distance before turning into the parking lot that will allow students to drive in and park their vehicles while sort of queuing on campus and not spilling back out onto Roberts Road.
Okay.
And again, this site was reviewed by MSTA, and we've had several meetings with them and went over and reviewed comments such as that or discussions, we had discussions such as that.
Okay. Okay. That's good to hear. Thank you. I appreciate it. My other questions have to do with the metal panels on the back of the building. I'm not sure what this is going to look like. It's really hard to conceive what this is going to look like, and I'm a little confused because I've been to so many places, institutional buildings that have large windows with a brick facade. I'm wondering why a brick facade isn't working here. I mean, I understand, you know, it could save you a little, but inches across a large building, when you say metal panels versus the brick as far as, you know, being environmentally friendly, but I don't understand why we can't have brick there.
Well, this was really driven by an economic decision at the beginning. When we had our three-story building, the height of the wall was such that the brick actually is carried on the foundations of the building. The minute we went to The minute we went to four-story buildings, we had to carry the weight of the brick on the steel frame.
Okay.
So we had to increase structural beam sizes and depths, wind bracing, the steel studs behind it, everything went up. It was, it was quite a bit of money. So the decision was made to go to, now, these are architectural metal panels, they're good-looking panels, they're lightweight, so we were able to take, you know, $200,000 of structural steel out of the job. And then the added benefit was that we got to make the windows a little bit bigger in each of the classrooms. So it was a little bit of a win on that side, too.
And why is that? What's the relationship between the brick and the window size?
Well, the ability to carry the brick is a function of the width of the openings. So the wider the opening in brick, the more steel is required to carry that.
I see.
Metal panels are lightweight.
Okay. So it's really a nature of saving this steel on that? It's kind of tough, because you want the schools to look attractive, and there are a lot of schools across the country that, that look sterile, you know, and you want students to feel proud when they come back to that school and find it to be attractive. And I just, I can't foresee how these metal panels are going to look. Like, I don't know if you brought photographs of them or anything like that, but I am very concerned about allowing a building to go up that maybe looks too institutional and not, not attractive, so attractive that people are really proud to have it be their high school. And I know that seems kind of like a squishy concept, but that's, that's what I'm struggling with, because I don't want, I kind of don't want that responsibility of going for something that's unattractive.
If I may add, I want to make sure that we're also clear in terms of the orientation, that this is the portion of the building facing the creek.
Yeah.
And that part of the building. Also, in terms of looking at this, if you, if you deleted it, there's also, and I'll let you address this, is whether it looks too institutional. It looks not like a school, more like a institutional use that you would consider and part of a governmental complex, because all you have is a deletion of windows, and then you just have large, open spaces worth of uninterrupted material. Is that true, Ms. Loring?
I think so, and I think as an architect, we generally consider metal panels to be a nicer aesthetic material than common brick. So for us, it was, you know, it was easy to make the suggestion, the recommendation. There should be very handsome panels, they're not shiny, they're a matte finish, they have finished life that's very close to that of a brick. The fasteners are all concealed, it's got a rain screen fastening system, so it is very economical and very efficient in terms of the exterior envelope. And there's, it's, it's a nice system, and, you know, it's about the same cost, maybe a little bit less than the face brick. And then we talked about the cost of the extra steel. So for us, it was kind of a win-win. I think, you know, if you want to get into the aesthetics of it, this is an interesting area of town, it's rural right now. The facades that face the streets are masonry. And I think that the principal view of the building will be, should be satisfactory from that regard. This is the side of the building that no one is really going to see facing the creek, just from that viewpoint that you're expressing.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if I 100% agree, because students are going to be all over this campus, so I think, I think the building will be seen from every angle. And of course, it's rural right now, but that'll be like for the next 17 minutes, and then there'll be 500 homes by the time we leave here. So, you know, it's, that's temporary. Do you have any examples you can share with us from this area, buildings that we might be familiar with that have these metal panels?
Well, I can, I can point to Mills Park Middle School.
Okay.
Which has metal panels on the upper floor.
Okay.
Now, those are a little bit different orientation in that the texture of the panels is vertical, these are horizontal.
Okay.
But that would be a great...
So we can give you the URL if you want.
Well, you just spent a whole lot of time at Mills Park Elementary School.
Yeah, I was just thinking, I was thinking that, that Mills Park has that.
MillsParkMS.net.
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
Oh, okay.
WCPSS.net.
So, is that the metal panels that are below the windows? Are those metal panels?
Are you looking at our facade?
She's asking about Mills Park.
She was comparing Mills Park to...
I'm trying to look at Mills Park Middle to kind of...
Okay, so, yes, I think there are metal panels below the windows, I think the metal panels...
And you're saying they're vertical, and ours, the ones on this high school be horizontal?
The joints on our building are going to be horizontal, you can see the joints, and those metal panels are vertical.
We can't really see that on here, and I don't even know if I'm looking at the right thing.
It's very subtle.
Yeah, it's hard to see.
May I piggyback on that for a second?
Yeah.
Do you happen to know if the percentage of metal used with Mills Park is still within , or to staff, if it was within that 75%, because it looks like quite a bit of metal? So I'm wondering, I'm trying to get a feel to what does 57% look like?
Yeah, I don't know if Steve can speak to it, I'm not aware of what the percentage is. That was...
Understood.
And I guess the other way to maybe think about this is that overall, our, all facades combined were at 65%, two of which were 75% or more.
So it's just 57% on that one section that's four-story?
This facade that you're looking at.
That's facing east.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Clarification, it's 56 on this side and 57 on the east side, but overall, he's saying that...
Can we look at the east side?
Yep.
Okay, the other thing that we did on, on this elevation is that this is the entry here. So it's more glass, it's a little more open, it's a little more inviting. We did that intentionally to make sure you understood where the entrance to the building was. And this piece right up here is the media center, so that's up on the second floor. So it has a lot of glass, too. It'll be kind of a lantern, I guess, if you will, with a, and it has some metal panels around it, too.
What is the red? Why is it red in the illustration?
That is not the color of the glass. It's, I think, a shading to indicate our...
This is actually the transparency overlay. This was the, just a good example, showing the materials calculations. The red is the second story transparency requirement, which is a less requirement than the blue, which is the first story.
Oh, I see.
And that's, blue glass is not going to be blue, either.
Okay. All right.
I'll just say I don't have concerns about the use of the metal, because at the end of the day, it is an institution, you know? It's not like it's your home or something. And I think it could, particularly where you're putting it to the back, and the fact that you'll have more natural light. You know, as a nurse, I know this, these kids and all of us need more natural light. And that, I mean, that's better for every aspect of our lives. I like that idea.
Let me also, to assist with this, Larry Sherrill, who is with Wake County School System Facility Planner, he is aware, Department of Public Construction has certain minimum requirements regarding daylighting in classrooms. I just want to make sure that he presents that information to all of you.
Hi, yeah, I'm Larry Sherrill, I'm an architect and facility planner with Wake County Schools. The idea of daylighting in a classroom is very important, and we try to take advantage of that every time we can. It saves energy in a way, you have the natural light instead of artificial light, but there are also a lot of documented cases of student improvement, student achievement being higher in rooms that are more daylight. So we, we work real hard to try to get that, and in this case, we were able to do it because, as Mr. Holly talked about, reducing the steel, we were able to get the bigger windows there than we might have been able to have if we had used brick. It's really important from an academic point of view.
Yeah, I get the value of the bigger windows, and my thought is, really, it's not about having smaller windows or bigger windows, it's about the cost of steel. That's what it comes down to. And if it was really a high priority for the school system to have well-lit buildings, they would pay for this steel if they were going to have the masonry. That, I don't think that you'd actually narrow down the windows and then have the increased fuel costs for perpetuity. I mean, this, this building is going to be for many years. How long do you build a building for? I mean, do you anticipate 80 years?
I think the, we usually think of 40 or 50 years as being a minimum lifetime, but in reality, we're going to have these schools till, you know, forever, as far as we know.
Okay.
Yeah, when they get, in 40 or 50 years, when they need maintenance, we'll fix them up and keep them, so it's not like we're going to sell them.
Right. And that's, I mean, for me personally, I don't know how I feel about the metal panels. It may look good today, it might be some of these things like, I don't know, dome architecture from the 60s where, you know, later on, it looks like, oh my God, man, that was a 60s building, you know, kind of thing. I don't know, I mean, I just, to me, the brick is kind of a classic look. I want our high schools to look extremely attractive, even though it is an institution, it's a place that we, you want kids to feel good about and proud about. I don't need to try to persuade anybody in the council, I just personally would rather see that it go masonry, I'd rather have that cost put into it, knowing that it's going to be a building that will be for at least 50 years or more, I would anticipate more. That's just my, my personal thought on the matter.
Well, I share your feeling about having, it's important to have a school that the kids can be proud of, and that the staff and the faculty and the community is proud of. And personally, I don't, I don't find metal panels, you know, the kind of metal panels we're talking about as being detracting to the appearance of a building.
Yeah, well, that's good, because it looks like it'll probably go that way, but, yeah.
Other questions, comments, Mr. Yerhaughn?
Just, just a couple. Going back to the encroachment into the conservation easement, is it correct that when one encroaches into the easement, one needs approval from the agencies that are in charge of that easement?
Lori, do you want to speak to that? That was some discussion, and it changed at the last minute, so I don't want to...
Because I'm hoping that's the case, we're going to be protected.
Yes, and we're looking at the, we've got to look at the exact documents in terms of the easements to see what's required, in terms of what kind of permission we may need, or if there is an abandonment of a portion of an easement that may need to happen. So we had a discussion about which comes first. Do we deal with the easements before they get their site plan approval, or do we see if the site plan's going to be approved, and then deal with the easement issues? And we decided to bring the site plan before you first, and then at a later time, we'll figure out exactly what the school system has to do to get approval for what they need in terms of the easements.
Okay, now, we do have, Betty Parker is here that I think has some information that can assist in regard to your particular question.
Hi, Betty Parker, Real Estate Services, Senior Director, Wake County Public School System. We've been working closely with not only the town staff, but the Clean Water Management Trust Fund. Our understanding is that we have already shared with them the route of our sewer lines, and that's been approved by Clean Water Management Trust Fund for this particular encroachment. No additional mapping is needed at this time, but when we do map our sewer lines, that will go through the ordinary approval processes with the Town of Cary. So we've already achieved the understanding with all involved that are necessary, so we do have those approvals.
That's excellent information, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And the other minor questions, since we have minor modifications, I'm asking a minor question. You also mentioned the, you'd be disappointed if I didn't mention this, I guess, the scattered farm buildings that are on the site. Has anyone checked into the condition of those? I mean, or is any of them a residence? Any historic value or any disposition of...
Yes, sir, we've looked into that. There's one residence that has some historic significance, but early in the process, we worked together with the historic commission prior to bringing an earlier phase of this, and they've decided that there's not sufficient value to warrant keeping it. It's the only building that's occupied. Mr. Anderson lives in a building that's roughly where the bottom-left corner of the school building is going to be located. There are some old dilapidated tobacco barns, and an old house that was the previous Anderson family residence that are in poor repair. I don't, I don't anticipate usability of any of those. And the Anderson residence is the only one that's currently occupied. There was one on the southeastern most tract, it was a newer house, had some asbestos issues that we have long since remediated and removed, as well as some environmental issues with underground storage tank leakage. So that's all been removed and addressed, so we're down to just the Anderson residence.
And there's no particular plans for that right now, other than eventually...
That's, that's true, it will eventually be raised. As part of our contract with the Andersons, we gave the family the opportunity to move the house off-site if they chose. They own some other tracts in the area, and that was something they were interested early on, but later through the process, they've chosen not to do that, so it will eventually be raised.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Other concerns or questions?
I just want to take one moment to just mention one thing that's actually not site plan related, but since you have school folks here, I just thought I'd mention it. I've heard several citizens comment about the name that was selected, Green Level. With Green Hope High School being so close, people are kind of under the impression that maybe it's too redundant in its naming, and a lot of people have asked why we didn't name it White Oak High School, since the, the White Oak, you know, Creek is right there. And if anybody wants to like pass that along, that, you know, there's some consternation about that.
I appreciate that. It's interesting to note that that was one of the choices provided to the school board. The school board considered a range of choices and decided on Green Level because of the connection to the Green Level community. I think, my recollection is there was some concern on the part of the Board of Education that White Oak is a shopping center in Garner, and they were concerned that by naming it White Oak, there would be some county-wide confusion as to its location. But that, that decision was the board's, and I'll certainly relay your concern.
That'd be cool, thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
Other concerns or questions? Okay, we'll move to the, we'll close the public comment portion and move to the motions necessary. Mr. Hales can walk us through these motions.
I'll just refer you to the staff report and the prepared motions, and there, nothing's changed.
Okay, Ms. Bush?
Boy, you put me on the spot, I have to go to the...
My sense is that, and I could be wrong, Jennifer Sato, my sense is you'd be more comfortable if we did these individually, because the masonry one...
It'd be my preference.
Because otherwise, you'd have to vote against everything.
That's right, and I support everything else.
Right. And so there's a motion in there, Lori, about individual, motion to approve individual modification requests.
So we can do the motion for each modification request separately?
Yeah.
Okay.
You could group them all together that you are all in support of, and only pull the one out if you want.
Oh, that's true, you could do three in one, yeah.
Okay, so make a motion, then, to approve modification, all of the modifications, except for the modification, what number is it?
Four.
With respect to, thank you, four, with respect to the building, for metal building tiles.
There's a motion?
Second.
And the second discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And I'll make a secondary motion to approve the site plan associated with, for the minor modification with the metal side panels.
There's a motion?
Second. Let me ask you a question, so you're moving approval of the site plan that includes those first three minor modifications and not the fourth one?
Yeah, she was...
That was the first one.
First motion, now she's on the...
That was the first motion, this is the one now for the panels.
This is just the panels.
Oh, okay.
You still second this?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Bush, I might suggest that you, that you phrase it in terms of the reductions in masonry lab, rather than the...
Right, the material use.
Okay, let me go back to that one, because I'm, I moved past that worksheet. Is it worksheet one? It's addition modification.
Worksheet one, yes.
Nothing like the mayor putting you on the spot.
The modification's on page 11 of 15 of the staff report, if you're looking for it.
Okay, so, yeah, I did the motion to approve, so the, for the reasons discussed, I moved that we approve the modification request number four?
Yes.
For approval.
That's a modification to your motion, are you okay with...
Yes, I am.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed?
No.
Motion carries...
One, two, four.
Four to two. I had to remember how many of us were here. Four to two. And any other motions?
You have to have site plan approval, right? Do you want to do that, Lori, or you want me to?
No, I, I want to roll. Let's see, and that's the last one. I make a motion, for the reasons that we previously discussed, we approve the proposed site plan without condition.
There's a motion?
I'd like to point out quickly, there's a proposed condition that they address the remaining development review committee comments.
Oh, I see the applicant, and, sorry, thank you. It's number one.
You want to restate?
I'll restate the motion that, for the reason discussed, I motion that we approve the proposed site plan with, with consideration, with condition that the applicant must satisfy, satisfactorily address any remaining Development Review Committee comments in the master plan.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And that's all the motions that I'm aware of. So, I'll close the public hearing and thank everyone.
Thank you.
For that item. Our second quasi-judicial public hearing is the Brickyard Sketch Site and Subdivision Plan and Overview of the Hearing Procedures and Detailed Rules are attached to the present agenda. All speakers who would like to speak at this public hearing must be administered an oath by Mrs. Johnson, who is on my right. We'll pause just a moment to allow these individuals who would like to speak at the public hearing to approach Mrs. Johnson and receive their oaths. And we'll take a moment, pause, and not say anything until this process has been completed.
Okay, Ed, how do I stop it from going? What? Yeah, I want it to go up, and I don't want it to go back. It's like laying me down. See?
There's a, there's a clip. I don't know how to figure it.
Ah, that's it. Thank you.
Got it? Yeah, right? And it was off, right?
Yeah. I kept going. I don't need any lower. You know what?
Motion?
So, how old was it? So, how old was it?
And now, I'll ask council members if they've had any site visits, expertise, communication, financial relationships, specialized knowledge or close relationship to an affected person to disclose, starting on my right with Ms. Zadka.
No, sir. No.
Mr. Smith? I have not.
I have not.
Mr. Yerha? At this time, I'll invite, based on the disclosures, anyone, based on the disclosures from the council members, I'd invite anyone to the podium who has been sworn in to speak. If you have an objection to council members' participation in this hearing, seeing none, we'll continue. I'll open the quasi-judicial public hearing, and our staff will introduce this item. Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening, council. Case before you is the Brickyard, referred to as 14 SB 020. It is located approximately at the intersection of NC 540, also sometimes referred to as I-540 and NC 55, and is currently on about approximately 100 acres. Before you, you'll see the vicinity map showing a relative location to that said intersection in addition to adjacent development. Currently, in addition to NC 540 and NC 55, it is also adjacent to McCrimmon Parkway, and then also there's a future proposed collector that will go through the site, and the current name of that collector is proposed to be Mahal Avenue. Currently, there's an existing triangle transit route that runs along NC 55 to the north and to the south. The site is impacted by a series of stream buffers, as you'll see on the site. In addition, a lot of the sites adjacent to this particular site are also impacted by stream buffers. Current base zoning for this particular site is ORD, and there's also an ORD conditional use with this particular site, and then also there's an overlay, the Alston Mixed Use Overlay District. The site, as I mentioned, is also governed by the Alston Plan, and some of those requirements are that it is located within the Petty Farm neighborhood. The site is proposed this evening, crosses two transportation analysis zones, 14 and 15, and then also within the plan, there are two design zones, the Neighborhood Center and Neighborhood General. Here's the relative location of the Petty Farm neighborhood in comparison to the other four neighborhoods that make up the Alston Plan. As mentioned before, this is a good description of TAS 14 and 15, and how the Neighborhood Center and Neighborhood General design zones impact the site. I'll enter the portion of the presentation that deals specifically with the site plan before us this evening. Now, I want council to be aware that this particular graphic as presented was developed by the applicants, and the orientation of it is a little bit different than some of the other orientations that you've seen this evening. North is going to be to the left, and south is going to be to the right. You'll see this graphic a couple times this evening, so I'm going to move ahead. Just to be clear, within the Alston Plan, there were development limitations for each transportation analysis zone. As you'll see in this particular plan, the applicant has proposed for TAS 14, zero commercial square footage, zero retail square footage, and approximately 363 units out of a maximum of 420 units. They've also indicated, based on the proposed development, within TAS 14, there is no additional planned remaining square footage, given the encompassing of their development. In TAS 15, they are only occupying a portion of TAS 15, and within their portion of control, they are proposing zero square footage of commercial, zero square footage of retail, and of a maximum of 355 residential units, they'll be proposing 67 units, which leaves 288 units for development. It's also worth noting that a rezoning that occurred this past August, 14 REZ 18, 75% of the Neighborhood General area within TAS 15, I'll be more than happy to go back to the map later this evening for clarification, but 75% of that Neighborhood General area is going to be required for non-residential or mixed uses. Applicants also developed a map within their sketch plan, showing how they've gone ahead and divided the Neighborhood General and Neighborhood Center design zones. What you will notice is that the line that they're using to divide both neighborhoods is approximately the location of the stream buffer. They've also included locations for public art. Public art is a requirement of the Alston Plan, and here shown with blue circles are the proposed locations for that public art. They were also required to, as a part of the Alston Plan, provide gathering space locations. They provided 10 outdoor gathering space locations and various locations throughout the development, and also they've provided an amenity center as well. There were seven champion trees identified on the site, and they are proposing to save all seven champion trees. All seven champion trees are located in locations to where they could be either utilized by a public gathering space, proposed amenity center, or a future non-residential location. Also, as part of the Alston Plan, they were required to have homes, have a built-to-line. This particular graphic provided by the applicant shows that they are able to meet a 15-foot Another item of, staff wanted to have addressed was understanding how any future non-residential uses would impact the development. So, what we've had them do is go ahead and show us how a future portion of the site could interact with their proposed residential development. I'd also like to note that they are not proposing to build any non-residential square footage, however, we've asked them to provide a graphic. And also, I'd like you to be aware that they are providing a graphic on portions of, excuse me, portions adjacent to their site that they do not necessarily control at this time. So, this graphic is purely being shown for illustrative purposes, to demonstrate how any future development could interact and complement what they're proposing. Again, similar graphic, but another requirement of this particular plan was having a certain percentage of the area between uses fronting streets to have a minimum amount, excuse me, a maximum amount of gaps between buildings, and so this graphic is to demonstrate that. Those requirements describing the gaps between buildings are required by the Alston Plan. They've also gone ahead and provided potential housing elevations. Just to remind everyone in the audience and also council, they're proposing 304 town home units and 126 detached dwellings. This graphic shows some of the potential models of homes, and then also the graphic that they provided this evening that you saw earlier and will see again, gives a good idea of where they imagine different types of townhomes to be located and different types of detached dwellings to be located. There is one minor modification request associated with this plan. At this time, the applicant does not propose a connection to the north. The property to the north is bounded by NC 540. Just so that we can clarify for council and members of the audience, that NC 540 is a controlled access corridor. They would not be able to stub their development to 540. There's also a grade separating crossing, because it is a toll road, so it is neither fiscally or physically feasible at this time. In addition, Parkside Town Commons, which is to the north of 540, did not contemplate a crossing of the toll road corridor. In addition, there are power lines running along the northern end of their proposed development, and it would conflict with an above-grade crossing if they were to cross NC 540. This is just a description of the minor modification request. As you can see, there are going to be, at this time, with the proposal, three connections to other adjacent streets, and then you'll see that there are two arrows that are on the right side of the drawing. Those are locations where the applicant is proposing to stub a road to the property line, but will not be connecting to another road on the opposite side. In addition to the site plan, there were some initial access concerns, as you'll see on the graphic provided. There is a distance of 660 feet between the two main access points to the neighborhood, even though they are accessing and stubbing, in this case, they would be stubbing to the CSX rail line, which is to the east, but they would not be crossing it. They would also be creating a stub to the southern sites, but because there is no road to the south at that location, there's nothing to connect to. And then also, there is Petty Farm Road, which is directly south of the development, and the applicant is proposing a realignment of a portion of that road to connect. However, Petty Farm Road, the southern terminus of that road, does not connect back to NC 55. At this time, I would like to transition into the applicant's presentation. After the applicant has completed their presentation, staff would be more than happy to answer any questions that council has, and we also will be more than happy to elaborate on some of our access concerns for the site.
Thank you. At this time, I'll call on the applicant's attorney to present arguments and evidence in support of the application by addressing the applicable approval criteria.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Jason Barron with Morningstar Law Group here on behalf of the applicant, Lennar Homes. Here with me tonight is Mr. Steve Leach of Lennar Homes, also Mr. Ryan Akers of the McAdams Company. Ryan is a professional engineer who will testify as to the components of the plan itself. And then finally, Mr. Earl Ullwelleen with Kimley Horn and Associates. He's a transportation engineer who has conducted the traffic impact analysis associated with this application. Michael, thank you very much. And he's, Michael's done a good job of kind of outlining the plan, so I won't reiterate much of that. I do want to say, it's, it's my great pleasure to be here tonight. This, this plan represents the culmination of months of hard work that's been put in by a lot of people, put in by the applicant, the applicant's team, the town staff, planning and zoning board, and you all, if you consider the zoning process that we went through back in the summer in order to facilitate the plan that's before you tonight. Consistent with the conversations that occurred during that zoning process, we believe the plan that's before you tonight represents the type of development that folks were thinking about. It's a kind of TND-style neighborhood, contains a mixture of residential product types, and ultimately is the type of development that we believe will be incredibly complimentary to the future non-residential uses in the remainder of the Petty Farm neighborhood. And just to refresh you all's recollection, as Mr. Grattis indicated, the remainder of the Petty Farm neighborhood is generally reserved for non-residential uses as part of that rezoning process. Before I turn it over to Mr. Akers, I do want to make a special note of appreciation for the efforts that the town staff has gone through in this case. This is, this is a complicated plan, and they've put in, they put in yeoman's work, and I've said it before on other cases, and I'll say it again, the Town of Cary should be very proud of its staff, from planning to parks and rec to engineering to transportation to the fire chief, to the police chief. I mean, folks really give a lot of thought. They're very thoughtful. They're very professional. They're very accessible. And in fact, you know, up until the last couple of days, we have been working very hard with those folks to make sure that the plan that comes before you all tonight is one that not only we feel comfortable with, but also folks at the town feel comfortable with. And as we will talk about further into the hearing, the culmination of that is a new condition that's been added to the case with respect to emergency access to the site. There had, were some comments that were made by the fire chief and the police department related to emergency access services to the site. We've been able to coordinate with them and ultimately have offered a condition that they've consented to, and you'll hear from the fire chief a little bit more on that, as well as our engineer, but ultimately addresses those concerns. So, I do want to thank everybody who's been involved, and Lisa too, the assistant town attorney, did a great job pulling together that meeting. So, with that said, we're, like I said, we're very happy to be here tonight. Lennar is incredibly excited to move forward with this site and with this project, and they've put in a lot of time and spent a lot of, a lot of time, a lot of energy and a lot of money in order to get here today. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Ryan Akers, who will present the plan on behalf of the applicant.
Mayor, council members, thank you for hearing us this evening. My name is Ryan Akers, civil engineer, project manager with the John R. McAdams Company, located in RTP Durham. Licensed engineer with North Carolina, been with McAdams Company for 10 years. I joined McAdams right out of college, attended Cornell University in upstate New York, got my undergraduate degree in civil engineering and my master's degree in engineering management. Spent the last few years on working on some of the larger residential developments in the Town of Cary. None of them have been quasi-judicial. This is my first. I've worked on very similar projects to the Brickyard and adjacent municipalities, but I'm not here to tell you about those. I'm here to talk about the Brickyard. So, I'm going to go ahead and highlight some of the key features first. Brickyard, and a lot of this is parroting what, what Mr. Grattis has said, but I'm going to go through it just because I'm pretty proud of what we've done. The Brickyard has done, has a total of 430 units, consists of 128 single-family detached and 304 townhouse units. In keeping with the newly adopted requirements for the traffic analysis zone 15, a portion of the subject property has been designated for future non-residential use. Mr. Grattis pointed that out, but the portion on the, I guess it would be the south portion, TAS 15, is proposed to be non-residential. Plan proposes to extend Mahal, Mahal Avenue from Alston Town Center in eastward, east-west direction through the site as a central collector street, including a roundabout. Mahal Ave intersection with Highway 55 will be a full movement. Signalized intersection will serve as the front door to the Petty Farm neighborhood. Mahal Ave is proposed as a tree-lined, median-divided collector street with a mix of uses. Will have three access points to the community proposed off Mahal Ave. Just highlight those real quick. Closest to the CSX rail corridor, we have a roundabout closer to Highway 55. The second access point off Mahal Ave is a roundabout, which will serve as the primary, primary entrance to the community. The street is flanked on both sides by single-family and townhouse units and acts as the gateway to our centrally-located amenity center that's associated with the development. The site also has a right-in, right-out access onto Highway 55, shown here. As to environmental aspects, the site contains significant buffered streams that essentially bisect the property. There are also seven, seven champion trees identified and located on the property, all of which are being preserved as part of this plan. Furthermore, in addition to the sidewalks that'll be located on both sides of the street, the plan includes numerous pedestrian trails to enhance the overall walkability and pedestrian experience on the site. Finally, in addition to the recreational facility, a number of the community green spaces are incorporated into the design utilizing champion trees to a large degree. So, the development, although dense, does an amazing job of protecting the natural features and character of the old Brickyard site. That includes the brief summary of, of the Brickyard, and as mentioned by staff, however, we have a request for minor modification with this plan. The Land Development Ordinance, or the LDO, Section 710 3B1, requires a roadway connection to all cardinal directions. To address this, we have provided code-compliant connections, or sorry, yeah, code-compliant connections for the eastern, southern, and western boundaries. However, we cannot provide one to the north to Interstate 540, and as noted by staff, and we agree, 540 is controlled access corridor regulated by the Department of Transportation. We do not believe DOT would ever grant such a connection. So, now I'm going to discuss the statement of compliance pertaining to the approval criteria established in the LDO, Section 392I. Finding number one, with approval to, of the request for minor modification that we just talked about, the sketch plan complies with all applicable requirements of the ordinance, including the development and design standards of Chapter 7 and 8, as well as the dedication and improvement provisions of Chapter 8 and all applicable town standards. As a reminder, the site is bounded to the west by Highway 55, 540 to the north, CSX Railway to the east, and to the to the east, and to the south that is bordered by the remainder of the Petty Farm neighborhood and TAS 15. The Alston Activity Center concept plan, the AACCP, I'm just going to refer to it as the Alston Plan, permits residential densities at the amount proposed. In fact, our development is proposing far less residential density in the Petty Farm neighborhood than what the Alston Plan allows. With respect to parking, the development will include the code requirements. Our plan has been reviewed by staff four times, and we have addressed all outstanding comments. We have responses to the nine remaining comments with the last review, and we have addressed them, and those will be, we'll address them with the final site plan review and approval process, but they're minor in nature. So as shown on the proposed plan and illustrated on all other material submitted, the improvements have been designed in compliance and with the requirements of the town's LDO, including the developments and design standards of Chapter 7 and 8, and the dedication improvement provisions of Chapter 8. Moving on to finding number two, that the plan adequately protects other property or residential uses located in the same property from the potential adverse effects of the proposed development. Proposed development is for an integrated, single-family, detached, and townhouse community. The property is appropriately buffered, and the development includes landscape as required by the LDO. It is my opinion that the proposed plan adequately protects other properties and residential uses on the subject property from the potential adverse effects of the proposed development for the reasons that follow. This development is a mixture of single-family detached and townhouse dwellings, and the proposed use has no inherent qualities that would adversely impact adjacent properties. As to finding number three, that the plan provides harmony and unity with the development of nearby properties, this urban-style residential setting proposed by this development will significantly complement, provide harmony and unity with the development of nearby properties. This is especially true for the remaining undeveloped portions of TAS 15, which as a result of the town's recent amendment to the Alston Plan, has been reserved primarily for non-residential uses. By incorporating a TND-style community, the future non-residential uses will provide true live-work-play opportunities within the Petty Farm, something that has not occurred within any of the other areas in Alston to date. With the mixture of uses contemplated within the Alston Plan, this mixture of uses is the exact type of development contemplated by the town when the plan was envisioned. As a result, the proposed community will be in harmony with the future development of nearby properties. Finding number four, that the plan provides safe conditions for pedestrians or motorists and prevents a dangerous arrangement of pedestrian and vehicular ways. Working closely with staff, we have developed a plan that prevents a dangerous arrangement of pedestrians and vehicular ways. We have developed a plan to include sufficient sidewalks ensuring no conflicts between vehicles and pedestrians. The street network has been designed in a manner that will result in lower speeds conducive to a single-family community. The site plan provides a network of sidewalks along both sides of all internal public and private streets and the eastern frontage of Highway 55. All sidewalks, crosswalks, and ramps will be ADA compliant and will provide safe and effective pedestrian flow. The sidewalk network, the network, is supplemented by a 4,000 linear feet of interconnected six-foot-wide trails. As a result, the plan provides safe conditions for pedestrians and motorists and prevents a dangerous arrangement of pedestrian and vehicle routes. And my final finding that I will present is number five, the plan provides safe ingress and egress for emergency services to the site. This plan does provide safe ingress and egress. We have designed for the street layout so as to ensure that there is adequate access to the emergency services to the dwellings. Again, the development proposes a widened collector with three access points. I went over those earlier, but again, three access points off of the collector, we have a right-in, right-out off of Highway 55 and a signalized intersection off Highway 55. The lineage to connecting to Highway 55 is widened, and we have an internal network of internal, I'm sorry, we have an intense internal network of streets as part of this TND-style development. As we do with every plan, we have engineered the roads with sufficient turn radii to accommodate large emergency vehicles. We met with the fire marshal and police chief yesterday. Sorry, we met with them yesterday afternoon, going back to the point that Jason, or Mr. Barron had made. Staff has been very willing and proactive in helping us. And we've addressed their concern brought up in the staff report. We agreed upon a solution to provide an ancillary emergency-only access point agreeable with NC DOT at the Petty Farm Road stub adjacent to the signalized intersection of McCrimmon Parkway and Highway 55. Mr. Barron has a handout that we'd like each of you guys to review. Hot off the press. It's probably easier to start with page number two, the 11 by 17 exhibit. Our main entrance off Mahal Avenue is our signalized intersection. Petty Farm Road currently, as Mr. Grattis pointed out, is a terminus that is stubbed back when McCrimmon Parkway was turned to a signalized intersection. The fire department had a concern that there would be limited access in certain situations, so we determined that it might be prudent to have an ancillary point of access for emergency vehicles only at the southern reach so that people could exit the facility in these certain events. And so we agreed that this emergency access only, which would be capable of withstanding the loading and the operation of emergency apparatus, could facilitate the coordination of the emergency response team on the site. So providing this third connection, it's my opinion that this plan goes above and beyond the code requirements and the standards and provides safe ingress and egress for the emergency services to the site. Just going into a little bit more detail, the alignment for Petty Farm Road and that tertiary connection to Highway 55 was just brought up to NC DOT yesterday afternoon, and they received it well, and we acknowledge that it would only be for emergency vehicles only and still maintain a protection from the common person's use, and that was agreeable. So we do have some more details to work out, but in general, it was agreeable. So that concludes my portion of the hearing. I'm now going to turn the presentation back over to Mr. Barron, and I appreciate you guys hearing me.
And just so we're clear, the, I'm going to read the specific language of that condition for purpose of the record and what that condition reads, and it is in your suggested motions sheet that I believe you all received prior to the commencement of the hearing, but it's condition number three on that sheet, and it reads, "Prior to submission of any Platts for subdivision plat approval, the developer shall construct and install an emergency access on NC Highway 55 at the current terminus of Petty Farm Road as shown generally on the attached emergency access sketch exhibit." And that is the aerial that you all received from Mr. Akers. "The location, design, and construction of such emergency access must be sufficient to support and allow passage of emergency vehicles to provide emergency services and other vehicles for evacuation purposes. The location and design of such emergency access must be submitted to NC DOT and the town of Cary for review and approval prior to initiation of construction. This condition will also be deemed satisfied if McCrimmon Parkway is extended across NC Highway 55 and a connection meeting all town of Cary standard specifications is provided from the development to McCrimmon Parkway." That's the condition that we have crafted with assistance of the town. With that, I will call our next witness, Mr. Earl Llewellyn of Kimbley Horn and Associates.
Good evening, everyone. Earl Llewellyn with Kimbley Horn and Associates, located at 200 North Mangum Street in Durham. Good to be with you tonight. I've been in the traffic engineering field for 26 years now, having previously worked as a traffic engineer for the city of Durham, then working in the private sector with McAdams Company, and now with Kimbley Horn and Associates for the past five years. Received a bachelor's in civil engineering in 1988 from NC State University, and I'm registered as a professional engineer in North Carolina, South Carolina, and Virginia. I reviewed this plan as well as preparing the traffic impact analysis, and it's my opinion that the plan provides safe conditions for pedestrians and motorists and prevents any dangerous arrangement of pedestrian and vehicle ways. The projected future volumes along Mahal Drive are of the nature, both in speed and volume, that would not discourage pedestrian mobility between the two uses, the residential and the future commercial to the south. In fact, the proposed roundabout that Mr. Akers just spoke about right here, with the inclusion of pedestrian crosswalks in accordance with Federal Highway Administration, typical design, and ADA compliance, will actually enhance pedestrian mobility and provide a safer opportunity for crossing between those two uses. As you might imagine, roundabout also acts as a traffic calming device, slowing traffic along both Mahal and the internal streets there, further making the pedestrian crossing Similarly, the street network is designed in a manner that will result in speeds that are conducive to a residential community. Also, Petty Farm Road currently intersects NC-55 at an angle, as you can see here, roughly about a 45-degree skew. What is proposed in the plan is with the construction of Mahal Drive in this area, realignment of Petty Farm, you create a better 9-degree intersection and access out to a safer controlled, signal-controlled intersection for access onto NC-55. As I said before, the plan provides safe ingress and egress for emergency vehicles. As Ryan alluded to, we have performed the traffic study for this project, and a summary for which is in your package, I believe. The analysis confirms that with these access points, that along with the roadway improvements and transportation improvements that are a part of the package and included on your plan, that no significant congestion is anticipated as a result of the project that would impede emergency vehicles or circulation at all. The plan, as Ryan said, does include proposed stubouts to the south and to the east for interconnectivity in the future. Currently, residents to the south are accessed via Petty Farm Road in this area and will continue to be at least as a minimum through this connection here. As a result, we believe the plan does provide for safe ingress and egress to emergency service, emergency services both to and from and within the project. The internal connections mentioned earlier and the two proposed access points onto NC-55 in this location and here at Mahal Drive are sufficient to adequately accommodate emergency vehicles. However, with the newly proposed alternate access to the south, which is about 1,800 feet away from Mahal Drive, enhances that and promotes not only the safe circulation of vehicles, but even in the case of an extreme event for evacuation. So the plan truly has a way of accommodating all of those type of emergency services and situations. The plan provides mitigation of traffic congestion impacts reasonably expected to be generated by the project. As I mentioned, the traffic study was performed for this project in accordance with DOT standards. City staff has, or town staff has reviewed that, of course. In addition to the site-generated traffic, we include numerous other approved developments up and down the 55 and adjacent corridors. In addition to that, we also included an ambient growth rate throughout build out of the project, so been very conservative in that regard. The applicant has agreed to implement all these improvements, and as noted, they are included on the plan. With those improvements, we're able to determine that acceptable levels of service will result and that any potential traffic problems are mitigated, resulting in Level Service D, which is, of course, the town's adopted standard, DOT's adopted standard. Our access points, as Ryan mentioned, are consistent with the Alston Activity Center plan, both in this location and here as well, and beginning to set up a grid network within TAS 14 and 15. Speaking of TAS 15, we did a supplemental analysis to look at what the remaining intensity of this pod could be and what the impacts of that would be on Mahal Drive from a traffic perspective. And as a result of that, I lost my mouse here, we have dedicated, plan to dedicate additional right-of-way on this side to accommodate another entrance lane on Mahal Drive. Not necessary to build at this point, but if needed in the future, there's a right-of-way to accommodate that. So based on the analysis, it's my professional opinion that the plan provides mitigation of traffic congestion impacts reasonably expected to be generated by this development and surrounding developments. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that's the conclusion of our case in chief. From an evidentiary standpoint, we would ask that the council take judicial notice of the contents of the town's land development ordinance, as well as the town's other adopted plans. We believe, based upon the evidence that's submitted on behalf of the application, that we've satisfied the requirements for approval of a sketch plan, and we respectfully request you all's approval of the same. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll invite speakers who've been sworn in, who would like to speak in support of the application, to approach the podium. Any other speakers? Seeing no one, cross-examination of the witnesses who have testified. Please approach the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Eric Evanson. I live in Cary, and I own 2.61 acres.
Could you give us your address, please? Have you been sworn in?
I haven't been sworn in.
You cannot speak unless you've been sworn in, so we'll need you to take a note.
Thank you, council. My name is Eric Evanson. I live in Cary at 101 Donna Place. I own 2.61 acres on Petty Farm Road and Highway 55. It's the pie-shaped piece of property. You can't see it, it would be to the lower right corner, but it's in the area that Ms. Robinson and some others have talked about, the desire to make that office and commercial, which is fine with me. We've owned that property for some time, it's an old farmhouse, and we have a tenant there. And I had not planned on speaking until about 10 minutes ago when I heard the plan, and I have no problem with this plan at all. I think it's a fine plan, and I know they've done a lot of good work, but this is the first I've heard about this access at the southern end of Petty Farm Road. If you've never been out there, the end of Petty Farm Road is one of the oddest roads in Cary. It's a little stub, it's just awkward, it just sits there right in the middle of a field, and it's right off Highway 55. And it used to be the access up into that neighborhood off 55. It was the only road before 55, and it basically, Union troops chased Confederate troops up that road, went around, and went to Durham. And that was the old Durham Road. And Highway 55 went straight through the farm, the nut farm, and cut off that road, and it remains to this day a dirt road. And so my question would be for Mr. Akers, who I know is a very competent engineer, is I don't really understand how he's going to take that dirt road and make it an access for the fire department or the police department. Is he going to cut that field open and make it a dirt road? And how is he going to limit that to the fire and police department and not the public? Because it's right there at McCrimmon Parkway where the high school kids come out and everything. I just don't understand that. So that would be my question.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. If we get, Mr. Barron, could we get an answer?
And I'll speak on behalf of Mr. Akers, but if Mr. Akers needs to testify, I mean, we're working out those details with respect to what the actual paving will be as you come off of 55. We've been in conversations with NC DOT as well as the town about using alternative pavers as opposed to kind of your typical standard paving material. So that is a detail that we're going to be working out during the construction drawing process. We're happy to coordinate and keep Mr. Evenson informed about what those are and share those plans with him if he has concerns. But right now, we don't know what the paving material is going to be. We're just waiting to find out. At a minimum, as the condition indicates, it's going to have to be sufficient to support emergency vehicles.
Okay. Thank you. Enter any other additional cross-examination before we move into opposition. Okay? Now's the time I would invite those who are sworn in who are opposed to the request. Anyone at all? Okay? I'll call on town staff to add any additional testimony.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'd like to clarify, too, that at this present time Petty Farm Road is paved. It was recently done. I was out there a little bit less than a month ago, and I can confirm that that particular stretch of Petty Farm is paved. At this time, I would like to ask Chief Kane to approach and discuss some of the recent changes, or excuse me, that's not the correct terminology, but recent developments with regards to this alternative access. Chief Kane?
Mayor and Council, good evening. As you've heard, we had originally expressed some concerns with the access to the site and subdivision plan for the Brickyard Development. Upon hearing those concerns, the applicant asked to meet with us, and we met with them. They asked to meet with us to better understand our concerns, and we discussed those. The product of that meeting is the condition that was presented to you earlier about providing an emergency access point utilizing Petty Farm Road. And so we believe that that emergency access, this condition, adequately and appropriately addresses our concerns for emergency access. So we are satisfied with that and no longer have a concern.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Kane. I'd also like to summarize again. The only minor modification being requested for this particular site plan is to the connectivity section of the ordinance, 710-3B1, which requires sites to connect to the north, south, east, and west. The applicant is requesting not to connect to the north, and based off additional conditions, or excuse me, additional observations from staff, the request appears to be reasonable based on surrounding conditions. At this time, I'd invite Mayor and Council to consider the site plan, and also please reference the site, or please reference the staff report and the additional worksheets, and staff will be more than happy to answer any questions if required.
Now, the portion to ask anyone if they've had, if they have objections to the competency of any testimony provided. Seeing no one, does either party believe new evidence has been presented that warrants a continuance? Seeing no one, we'll open the deliberative phase of the hearing, and I'd invite council members for their comments and questions.
I don't have a question. I'll just make the motion. Listen, one defense question.
Any questions or concerns, Ms. Yerha?
Yes, just one question. I'm very glad to see this new condition. I mean, that was in Chief Kane's testimony. But what if NC DOT doesn't approve this? It doesn't happen?
That was actually where I was going to go. Thank you.
We don't get to move forward. We can't get our, we can't get a subdivision plat approved unless we get approval from each of the town and NC DOT. So we, based on the conversation we've had with NC DOT, which happened quickly but amazingly effectively, my client, the applicant, has a comfort level with that discussion, that they feel comfortable offering this condition. But we recognize that it's a risk, and if for some reason it doesn't happen, then that's a risk we've assumed.
Good answer. While you're there, if I can ask a question. I understand the paving materials you don't know yet. That's to be decided. But how are you, do you have some idea of what you're intending to do to limit this to just emergency vehicles? I mean, is there, is there some thought?
Or examples of what's been done in the past?
Yeah.
Chief Kane, I don't know. If you want to provide testimony in that regard or provide an answer, I'm probably the least competent person to answer that question, which is not unusual. Or we can have somebody from our team. Yeah.
So we just discussed, discussed conceptually, there are a number of different ways to restrict public access. You could gate access to Petty Farm Road, and we could control the gate through either a Knox box lock or a siren activation, so that's one option. Another option, and probably the best option that I can think of, is that, and if someone in the audience might be able to help me, but there's the subdivision that, that is, pardon? Windsor Oaks at Penny and Killdeer Farm Road. We called the Sact, there you go, we called the Sact Road, an access point on to Killdeer Farm Road, and we equipped it with a, I call it a drivable curb, or I don't know the technical term, so that's drivable curb. So it looks like the street ends to the typical driver, but based upon our notes in CAD, we know that we can access that particular point, and so it serves as a great deterrent for use. So I think that there are a number of options out there that satisfies our need and would probably address the gentleman that had the question earlier, so.
Great. Thank you.
Does that help?
That's good. I wanted to bring that up because the gentleman did mention that.
Sure.
Other questions, comments? Ms. Adcock, would you like to walk us through the motions?
Sure. Move to approve the sketch plan and subdivision plan for the reasons discussed. I move that we approve the proposed sketch plan and subdivision plan with conditions as stated below, as it meets all the approval criteria set forth in Section 3.9.2. Is that an I or an L?
Well, Ms. Adcock, if I can interrupt you.
Oh, please do.
We actually need to approve the minor or vote on the minor modification first before we jump.
Okay.
We did put a revised motion in front of you. That will be your second vote. Your first vote is still whether or not to approve the minor modification that was requested.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you, Lisa. Sorry I got so far. For the reasons discussed, I move that we approve the minor modification request, the only one made by the applicant, as the request meets all of the approval criteria of the applicable sections of the LDO.
Second.
Okay.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Proceed.
Okay. For the reasons discussed, I move that we approve the proposed sketch site and subdivision plan with conditions as stated below, as it meets all of the approval criteria set forth in Section 3.9.2. I or L? Aye. Of the LDO. This approval is conditioned upon the following. One, the applicant must satisfactorily address any remaining development review committee comments on the master plan set, submitted for signature. Two, all parcels under this development plan shall be annexed before resolution of approval is signed. And three, prior to submission of any plats for subdivision plat approval, the developer shall construct and install an emergency access onto NC Highway 55 at the current terminus of Petty Farm Road, as shown generally on the attached emergency access sketch exhibit. The location, design, and construction of such emergency access shall be sufficient to support and allow passage of emergency vehicles to provide emergency services and other vehicles for evacuation purposes. The location and design of such emergency access must be submitted to NC DOT and the Town of Cary for review and approval prior to initiation of construction. This condition will also be deemed satisfied if McCrimmon Parkway is extended across NC Highway 55, and a connection meeting all Town of Cary standard specifications is provided from the development to McCrimmon Parkway.
Second.
There's a motion, second. Ms. Robbins?
Yeah, I plan on voting against the motion. Number three in the worksheet says, does the plan provide harmony and unity with the development of nearby properties? And I don't believe it does. I'll be voting against it.
Okay. Other comments, questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Mr. Smith, I'm sorry.
No.
Okay.
It was an aye.
Denied? You were denied?
No, he approved.
All right. Motion carries five to one. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. We'll now move to quasi-judicial 2.3. It's our final quasi-judicial public hearing and approval for modification to Parkside Town Commons and overview of the hearing procedures. Before we move there, I don't think I closed officially closed the public hearing. I need to go back and close the public hearing for item 2.3. Ms. Silverstein, are you okay?
I thought you did at the conclusion of it.
I don't think I said anything, but just to make sure, I'll close the public hearing once again. And again, move to the Parkside Town's Commons and overview of the hearing, public, hearing procedures. Detail rules are attached to the printed agenda. All speakers who wish to speak during this public hearing must be administered an oath by Ms. Johnson, who's on my right. We'll pause just a moment, allow those individuals who would like to speak at the public hearing to approach Ms. Johnson and receive their oaths, and we will pause from doing anything until that has been completed. I thought you were going to throw them. At this time, I have two council members missing, so I'll wait.
Essential to good deliberation.
Since we have an important question to ask all of our council members. Good, we have all our council members.
Stricker's on back there.
Okay. Now I'll ask council members if they've had any site visits, expertise, communication, financial relationships, specialized knowledge, or close relationship to an affected person to disclose. Mr. Yerha?
I have not.
Ms. Bush?
I have not.
I have not. Ms. Smith?
I have not.
Ms. Robinson?
I have not. No, sir.
I have not. Based on the disclosures we've heard from our council members, I'd invite anyone to the podium that has been sworn in to speak if you have an objection to a council member's participation. Seeing no one, we'll continue, and I'll open the quasi-judicial public hearing, and Mr. Hales of our staff will introduce this public, this hearing.
Thank you. As you mentioned, the final item on tonight's agenda, the final hearing on tonight's agenda, is a request by Kite Realty Group to modify some of the traffic mitigation conditions that council saw associated with Parkside Town Commons Phase 2C. Just about a year ago, in December of 2013, that plan came before council for approval. I believe everyone is familiar with the location, but just briefly, it's at the intersection of Oak Hill Chapel Road and NC Highway 55. It's bordered on the south by NC 540 and on the east by CSX Railroad Corridor. This kind of lays out the various phases of the project as it's moved forward. Phase 1 of the project included the extension of Oak Hill Chapel Road and the large anchors, Target and Harris Teeter and the associated inline shops, shown here in dark green. Phase 2A was infrastructure, shown here in a pale purple. 2B was the apartment complex, which is currently under construction. 2C is the plan that is being modified tonight, even though it affects more than that phase, and was the plan that council approved in December of 2013. That's shown in blue. Phase 2D subsequently came in and was approved administratively by staff, includes most of the inline tenants in the center portion of the site, shown in a darker purple. And there are still some outstanding out parcels and some of the inline tenant buildings shown in yellow that have yet to be approved or may have just recently been approved. So tonight, the request by the applicant is really dealing with the timing for the crossing, the out parcels and the timing of the crossing for the Oak Hill Chapel Road, Railroad crossing. And you're going to hear a lot of talk tonight about various out parcels. To quickly give you an overview, out parcels 3 and 4 were out parcels of Phase 1. Out parcel 3 is proposed for a Bank of America. That plan is currently in review by staff and is very close to approval. Out parcel 4 next to it is proposed for a Chick-fil-A. That plan should be submitted by now. They were working hard trying to get it in by the deadline, in the business today. Out parcels 9 and 10 are some inline center tenants there that we have not seen plans for nor heard any conversations about. Out parcels 11 is a Chuy's Mexican restaurant that has been approved by staff administratively. Out parcel 12 was actually part of Phase 2C. It came in, or Phase 2D, came in with that plan and was approved already. It's planned to be a Starbucks and Verizon, and is fairly close to completion. Out parcel 13 is a proposed Panera Bread, which has been approved administratively. And then out parcel 14 is Courtyard by Marriott. That plan is in review currently. So to quickly summarize the proposed changes, and I've broken these out by plans that have already been approved versus plans that are in process or haven't been submitted yet. Parcels 11, 12, and 13, they were eligible, they've all been approved. They're eligible for building permits now, and they're proposing any changes to that. What is changing is their eligibility for certificates of occupancy following construction. All three were proposed to be eligible after the crossing agreements were in place with the CSX and the various parties. What they're proposing now is to provide some payment in lieu or funds in reserve, payments in lieu, funds in reserve for an aggregate crossing, should it not move forward in timely manner, but not necessarily waiting on the crossing agreement in place. That's moving those certificates of occupancies farther forward in time to give them a little bit more momentum while we work out the crossing details. And then finally, the plans are currently in process. Several changes here, and plan approval is really moving up. They weren't eligible for even consideration for approval by staff prior to that crossing agreement being in place and funds for that aggregate crossing in place. What they're proposing now is moving that forward, so those 3 and 4, 9 or 10 are eligible now. Courtyard by Marriott is the one that's closest to the crossing itself and will be most impacted if, for whatever reason, that needs to go to a grade-separated crossing, and therefore they're proposing to keep that plan approval marker at the crossing agreement being in place and not moving that forward with the rest. However, they are adding a condition on Lot 14 that they won't be eligible for building permits until they've got their plan approved, obviously, and then they're providing funds in case that grade separation, again, after the crossing agreement in place, it goes south, providing some funds in case they need to provide the walls necessary to make that grade separation. And then on 3 and 4, ultimately, they were looking at certificates of occupancy only after the crossing itself was open. They're proposing to move those two certificate of occupancies forward in time so that after the plan is in place and the funds for that gradient crossing, they can go ahead and get those certificates of occupancy, because those are the ones that are farthest in the planning process right now. So that concludes staff's initial presentation. We'll be available to Al for some insight following the applicant's presentation. Anyone else who wishes to speak? Thank you.
Thank you. We'll call on the applicant's attorney to present arguments and evidence in support of the application by addressing the applicable approval criteria.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Tony Lathrop, and I'm pleased to have the opportunity to address Kite Realty, the applicant, and assist Kite Realty, the applicant tonight. With me, let me introduce the folks with me, are Mark Jenkins, Senior VP of Development for Kite Realty, Jay Matey with McAdams, and Krista Green of StanTech. And they have all been active in project-related transportation and engineering and planning and... and such matters. I want to thank the staff for their efforts in connection with this project, especially Kevin Hales, Jerry Jensen, and Lisa Glover for their assistance, and we'll do our best to move along and be mindful of your time. Mr. Hales' report gave an excellent overview, and I will make every effort not to replow that ground, but he gave a great review of the subdivision site plan approval request and a helpful summary of the approvals that have already taken place. As indicated, Phase Two C was approved last December, and this approval request is just intended to allow some additional progress in the development of Parkside, but while providing safeguards regarding traffic and development aspects. So, of course, we will commend to you all the staff report as updated by Mr. Hales' presentation tonight, and, and I will, well, I'll tender that to you and commit it to you for support with respect to appropriateness of this amendment in light of the six criteria under Section 3.9.2 of the LDO. In a nutshell, this amendment asks that the notes associated with the transportation commitments be amended, and in light of some additional commitments that have been described, we seek to just accelerate a few of the approval and occupancy provisions associated with a small number of lots. Of course, Section 3.9.2 sets out six criteria that apply to this request, and with this in mind, I will, in just a second, call on Mr. Matey and Ms. Green. Mr. Matey is with the project planning and engineering firm, McAdams, who's worked extensively on this, and Ms. Green, the traffic consultant who's worked on this extensively as well to give supporting testimony. And again, once again, we note that the council's approved Two C, the Phase Two C, and this is only a modest amendment being requested here. So with that, I'd ask Mr. Matey to come forward, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jay Matey. I am a project manager with the McAdams Company in Durham, North Carolina. I'm a licensed engineer in North Carolina and also the state of Florida. I've worked for McAdams for approximately two years and been in the engineering profession for over 14 years.
Briefly, can you just describe your involvement with this project?
Sure. When, when I joined McAdams in early 2013, I was immediately transitioned to Parkside Town Commons and became involved in the latter stages of the permitting with Phase One, and then was fully engaged with Phase Two as project manager.
And so, in, in the process of doing that, you've become familiar with the, with Cary's community plans and the LDO?
Yes, very familiar.
And as you know, this was, Phase Two C was approved last December, and you're familiar with that process?
Yes, very much so, and familiar with the testimony that occurred as well.
And the testimony from that process is still pertinent and relevant today, correct?
Yes, so the project as a whole has not fundamentally changed at all.
And you've reviewed the staff report as updated by Mr. Hales, and does the updated staff report accurately summarize the background on the development and the subdivision and site planned amendment approval request that's before the council tonight?
It does, and that slide does a very good job of illustrating the various phases.
Let me turn to the approval criteria with respect to the first one regarding compliance with, of the plans with the applicable requirements of the ordinance, including design, development standards, dedication and improvements provisions, and other town specifications. Can you briefly explain why the, this proposal complies and why the submittal plans comply?
Yes. This project is governed both by the Town of Cary Land Development Ordinance and the Alston Activity Center Concept Plan. The project meets the Alston Plan in such ways as the provision for a main street as defined in the plan, and also provisions for plaza space throughout the development. And then in general, it meets the Town of Cary Development Ordinance with regards to such criteria as landscaping and pedestrian connectivity.
Thank you. With respect to item two of the criteria, which addresses whether the plans adequately protect other property or residential uses located on this property from adverse impacts, can you please address that?
Sure. Again, it's consistent with the 2013 testimony. The property is bounded on three sides by either a road or railroad right-of-way, and on the north side by Kit Creek, which is essentially a preserve area. So it, there, there, there are boundaries between the project and adjacent properties, plus there's measures in place such as setbacks, buffers, provisions as far as stormwater pollution protection, and as such as that other properties aren't adversely affected.
In addition, in addition to the setbacks, it complies with access requirements, buffer streetscape guidelines, similar design requirements, correct?
Yes, correct.
And... And so, in your opinion, are there any adverse impacts whatsoever on other property resulting from this proposal tonight?
There are none.
Okay. Let me turn to item three of the approval criteria, which pertains to whether the subdivision and site plans in this amendment provide harmony and unity with the development of nearby properties. And again, if you could please just outline briefly why you think this proposal is in harmony?
Okay, similar to item number two, with, there are roadways and railroad right-of-way bounding the property, and then the properties that are adjacent on the other sides of those right-of-ways are, tend to be either undeveloped at this time, or there is, are some office parks in the RTP area to the east. So the project fits in well with, with what has been developed around it. It also complies with the Alston Activity Center Concept Plan, which in of itself is a master plan that is, controls harmony throughout this area as it is developed.
Thank you. Moving on to criteria, item four, can you please briefly describe why you think that the plan and its design elements as amended by this request provide safe conditions for pedestrians and motorists?
Yes, in the 2013 testimony, again, with the plan being consistent with that, a key aspect of the project from day one was to provide safe pedestrian and motorist egress and ingress within the project and also to adjacent roadways. We also, in compliance with the Alston Plan, there was a strong initiative to make the project have a sense of place and, and give a main street type feel. And then also, the, the town, or the plan in of itself complies with the ordinance standards as far as sidewalk design and street design, connectivity, safety as far as intersection site distances, and, and those sorts of topics in the ordinance.
Thank you. And next, in connection with item five of the approval criteria, can you address briefly ingress and egress for emergency services to the site?
Yes. Again, with, with just general access, there, there's a public safety aspect of the design so that emergency services vehicles could get to the project and also circulate within the project and have access to each and every building. So the design of, of this particular project takes that into account.
And the plan provides for appropriate turning radius and the proximity of streets and driveways to buildings?
Yes, yes, it does.
And the, the multiple access, access points have been designed appropriately for ingress and egress in that regard?
Yes, there are several access points onto NC 55 as well as onto O'Kelly Chapel Road.
Thank you, Mr. Matey, for your comments. If there are no questions, I'd now like to ask Ms. Green from Stantech.
Thank you.
Come forward. Thank you. Ms. Green will address traffic and transportation aspects. Could you briefly describe your professional background and your involvement in the traffic and transportation aspects of Parkside Development?
Yeah, sure. Good to see y'all again. I'm Krista Green with Stantech Consulting at 801 Jones Franklin Road in Raleigh, 27606. And I have 24 years of traffic engineering experience, and eight of those have been with Stantech. I have my undergraduate and master's degree from NC State, and I am also a registered professional engineer here in North Carolina. Although Stantech did not prepare the TIA for this development because you have town consultants that do, MAB, now VHB, are the ones that did this one. I'm gonna refer to them as MAB since that's what is on all the reports now, knowing very well who they are today. But we worked very closely with them and staff. We reviewed the numerous different submittals that came through till we got the final and worked hand in hand that, just representing the Kite, our developer, and trying to make sure we agreed, and they did it in accordance to the way the town and the DOT wanted, and we were in agreement with everything that was done in that report.
And so, obviously, you're also, in the context of being familiar with the traffic analysis, you're familiar with the overall master plan for Parkside that's part of this approval and this request tonight, correct?
Yes, we've worked very closely with MAB and McAdams and everybody, Kite, through the whole process.
And you actually testified last December regarding the transportation aspects in the earlier, earlier approval plans, including, for example, the overall project planning and the off-site improvements, as well as the transportation mitigation summary exhibits at that time, correct?
Yes, we did. As I said, we were in agreement, and it's also, it's not unusual for a project of this size for a developer to come in and hire another consultant just to review the documents on their behalf, too. So, as I stated before, we were in agreement with what was developed.
And can you comment, as you did last year, comment now on the revised notes to the transportation aspects and the overall traffic mitigation aspects?
Yes, as I testified in 2013 and have said tonight, the Transportation Improvement Report was professionally done, and it reflects the transportation mitigation improvements described in the approved plans and are appropriate for mitigating the applicable traffic impacts.
So, do you have an opinion tonight about whether the plans, as slightly modified by these revised notes, provide for traffic mitigation?
Yes, I do. The developer at O'Kelly Chapel Road has already built all the improvements for full buildout, and even with these additional lots, they're still not gonna be fully built out, so.
I'd also like to ask you about items four and five of the approval criteria, since they deal with conditions for pedestrians and motorists, as well as safe ingress and egress for emergency vehicles. And would just like you to comment briefly on those, as you did last year.
Sure. The designs of the streets and intersections, they still continue to be in keeping with the design applicable standards such as ASHTO to ensure the public safety. And I also want to reiterate my testimony in 2013 that the access points to the site are appropriately designed and were properly evaluated in the traffic analysis. The traffic mitigation commitments, including the revised notes, support the safe ingress and egress for emergency services to the site.
That essentially include, concludes our addressing of the criteria. I would request that the council take judicial notice of the town's requirements and the prior testimony, and thank you again for your time tonight and your review of these items, and if we have, if there are any questions, we'd be glad to address them. Thank you so much.
Thank you. This time, I'll invite speakers who have been sworn in that would like to speak in support of the application to approach the podium if you haven't already spoken. Seeing no one, I'll invite cross-examination of the witnesses who have testified in support of the request. Seeing no one, we'll continue and open the hearing to those who are opposed to this request. Seeing no one, call on town staff for any additional testimony.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll just call Mr. Jensen from Transportation Facilities Department up here briefly to explain staff's insights.
Good evening, Council. I just want to make you aware of some developments that have occurred recently. We, we just obtained a executive memorandum of understanding from CSX that allows us to advance the possibility of getting an at-grade crossing at O'Kelly Chapel Road. With that execution of that agreement, that allows us to go forward with a formalized agreement with that agency, as well as NC DOT. Upon full execution of that agreement, we'll then be able to have Parkside finish the continued roadwork across the railroad crossing. So there are still some things to go, but we're certainly in a, in a, in a more positive light than we were maybe this time when we had the plan approved earlier. I did want to also state that staff has collaborated with the applicant over the last several weeks to craft the proposed offerings, conditions that you see in your packet tonight. This, by all means, provides, certainly preserves our ability to make sure that Parkside conducts these improvements as outlined in the original traffic improvement plan, and with that, you know, hopefully, we'll have an executed agreement here soon.
Very good.
And that concludes staff's presentation. I'll turn it over to Council for deliberation. Thank you.
This time, I'll invite anyone sworn in who has an objection to the competency of any testimony presented. Seeing no one, does either party believe there's any reason or warrants, anything to warrant a continuance of this hearing? Seeing no one, we'll now open it up to council members for a deliberative phase of this hearing. Council members, questions or comments?
I just have one. One of the things I noticed is, so, I'll put it more in layman's terms and staff terms, so bear with me. It looks like what we're saying is that five more buildings can get their CO earlier rather than waiting for the CSX Railroad to be completed. That's, that's how I read it, and some can start building and the permit process can move quicker than is normal. Because my question, if I stated that correctly, is, is there any impact to the traffic if CSX continues to take this long period of time and we might not even have an opening? I feel for the applicant.
I think what we are observing, since the center initially opened with, with the Target and some of the other stores, is that the, the traffic demand really didn't materialize as, as much as we thought that that was predicted in the traffic modeling. So we believe that we have, with less demand than to anticipate, we probably have some more time before we'll, you know, realize that full, full traffic potential. So we feel like this is probably a workable situation for us.
Okay, great, thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up question? I thought I heard somebody saying, I don't recall who it was now, that actually there's a net increase of two buildings that are going to go online with the CO by the time you add some and some are delayed. Did I hear that wrong, Ken?
There's probably actually a slightly more acceleration than that, and I kind of go over it again really quickly. Right now, under the existing conditions, three plans are eligible for approval.
Right.
And then nothing else until after the agreements and everything were in place. And so what they're... And so what they're asking for is essentially that after the crossing agreement's in place, that all those be eligible for plan approval.
Right.
Actually, eligible now. So 3, 4, 9, and 10, which were delayed until after the crossing agreement's in place originally, those four are now eligible for, those are four additional plan approvals that are, that are eligible immediately. And then, do you want to speak, Lisa?
Well, I was just going to point out, there's one sentence in the staff report, and if you were looking for it, it's, it's kind of buried, but we tried to summarize just in raw numbers.
Right.
That site plan review and approval be allowed to occur earlier for five lots, 3, 4, 9, 10, and 14, that the applicants be able to request building permits earlier than currently allowed for Lot 14, and that they be able to request COs earlier than currently allowed for five lots, and those are 3, 4, 11, 12, and 13. So it's earlier CO approval for five, earlier site plan review and approval for five lots, and a potential earlier building permit approval for Lot 14.
So your math was much better than my math. I swear I thought I heard a net increase of two. Okay. But I, I understand what Jerry was explaining about the traffic not being as heavy as we anticipated it would be at the opening of the, of the first anchor store, so.
Other questions or comments?
Just, it's my favorite, my favorite target ever, just that I say it.
Not that that would influence your vote or anything.
No, I'm sure it doesn't, but it is my favorite one.
I'll now close the public comment portion of the meeting, of the hearing, and ask Mr. Hales to help us with motions if necessary.
I'll make a motion if you'd like.
Please.
I had it a second ago. I'll make a motion to approve the minor modification for the Parkside Town Commons site plan that speaks to the traffic mitigation timing for Phase 2 dealing with the railroad, CSX Railroad crossing.
There's a motion? Is there? And a second? I think it's Ms. Robinson.
Ms. Robinson, go.
Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Continue?
No, that's it.
Oh, that's it? Oh, that's right.
Thank you.
I'll close the public hearing. We have nothing else on our agenda, so I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
A motion and a second, discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Visit the Town of Cary website at townofgary.org.